I realize that the people from Seacrest, I think that's most of you, isn't it? Yeah, maybe we'll accept a motion to move that up on the agenda so you're not having to wait through.
So move.
Um, oh, wait, I think we have, let's go through our correct opening and then we'll take that motion. Thank you. Um, first, uh, on our agenda is public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on something that's not on the agenda? Rare, but it's happened. No, not tonight. Okay, so minutes, Paul.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of October 10th, 2023.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's your approval, thank you. And?
And on the minutes of September 26th, 2023, I have some concerns, I'd like to propose some modifications for the board to consider.
Okay. Move them up a little, that's the solid answer, Paul. Thank you.
It's the planning board minutes of September 26th, and excerpts are on the sheet here. There's only a couple of minor changes I'd like to add. Uh, this is in the section on the born rail trail presentation and discussion. Uh, Mr. Cavosse identifies Cavosse disposal, and I'd like to add, he's also the operator of Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station, because I think that's important.
Okay.
And then further down, uh, Mr. Bogarsky, the Mass Central Coastal Railroad, uh, mentioned a couple of things I thought were relevant that were ignored. And the highlighted area said, "Mr. Bogarsky stated that each car weighs between 250,000 and 280,000 pounds apiece, equivalent to 125 to 140 tons per train." He said that abandonment of a rail line requires a lengthy formal process that goes through Congress, that could take 10 to 12 years. He also stated that the U.S. Army would be completely opposed to it as the line leads to Joint Base Cape Cod. And thirdly, uh, at the end, I want to highlight, the statement by the chair, Mrs. Harris advised that the rail trail project will be discussed in the context of long-range planning.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I like these modifications. I think they're very important.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Any objections? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you. Okay, now, uh, Pat, if we could have a motion to amend the agenda so that we move up the, uh, what is now the second, uh, the public meeting on being continued by the resort owner LLC by filing due application. Move that to the head of the agenda.
I move that.
Do you have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, then that's what we're going to do, so now we are on the issue of the, uh, Seacrest changes. If more people come, they'd, um, there's additional room down the corridor, turn left, go to the end, and there's a room there that's been prepared, uh, with a screen so that you can see what's going on here if people have to move. But if you want to say something, you have to come back, um, to the podium, or there'll be more room, you won't get overcrowded, but maybe this is it. So, uh, right now, what we're hearing, um, is, um, the applicant is actually satisfied of the filing requirements, we've got some concerns, and we're going to, uh, hear about those concerns. Evan?
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, Kevin Clower, I'm an attorney here in town, and I represent Falmouth Resort Owner LLC, which is the owner of Seacrest property, uh, located at 350 Quaker. I'm joined tonight by, uh, Romy Bajwani, who is the head of asset management for Hershey Hospitality, as well as Tim Santos, uh, from Merrill Engineering, and Greg Serunian of ResCom Architecture, the engineer and architect respectively on this project. Uh, as you noted, we are seeking to modify the existing property, which currently operates at 253, we need help with an associated restaurant and function space. Um, since our last hearing, uh, we have revised the plans to increase the proposed landscaping as a buffer, uh, and to specify and reduce the lighting in the rear of the buildings. Uh, those plans were submitted last week to the board. Uh, the landscape plans, which is working right now, uh, provide a substantial amount of plantings, uh, along the edge of the property, both, uh, towards the existing building on the, on the west, uh, to the north, along the pond here, all throughout, um, including arborvitae, as was requested by the board and the planning board. We did submit some changes to the lighting plan, uh, which are shown here, here, and what we're showing is, uh, both, uh, changes to the lighting types, uh, the lighting next to the egress to be on timers, it remains dark sky compliant and downward facing, and, um, instead of, um, more in the way of actual lighting and, uh, lighting lamps or, uh, or fixtures like you'd see here, what we're proposing is rail lighting, uh, along the back of the building, which you can see on this, just covering it here, so we'd have rail lighting along the stairs and railings, which is designed, designed to be as unobtrusive as possible, provide safety lighting within the property and not affecting how it came to, um, tow the pond as was concerned. We do have to have lighting next to the egress here, as shown in code, but everything else we're going to try to do by rail lighting. So those are really the concerns, uh, that were raised by the planning board, by the budget, uh, at the previous hearing, so these are the changes that were made, in recognition of that, we hope that you find this satisfactory. I'm happy to address any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you for being so responsive to what, uh, to what was said. The 26th arborvitae plan to shield that, um, that is a good change, and I also noticed on the drawing that the, uh, the vegetation that's immediately at the side of the pond appears on the drawing, so that that will be left alone, so that that will be there. And it required us to whether or not it really had to be, uh, three stories high, because that makes them much more visible. In a plug district, so that it does have to be raised on stilts, so you don't have to chose the requirements for that side.
But we are able to utilize that space to provide parking, so we're, you know, trying to use that space as efficiently as possible, so the parking for these buildings will be located under the, uh, under the elevated structures.
Right, it has found a use, but it really, uh, wouldn't have been there had it not been for that requirement. So, thank you for being so responsive. Are there any other comments from the board on the changes that have been made?
No, I think it looks good. I mean, you know, our purview is landscaping and lighting on, on this, so, uh, they've done what we've asked, and, uh, the plans look good. Uh, I, it says lawn and natural vegetation, so is that just going to be kind of, uh, what naturally grows?
Looking for...
Kind of with, uh...
It'll be a combination.
Combination of...
Yep, combination thereof.
Yeah, so, but is it going to be manicured?
So, there, there'll be restrictions as to what can and can't be maintained there because of conservation regulations, um, to the extent that, you know, it can be trimmed and, and maintained in a neat manner, I'm sure they will, but it'll all be subject to conservation.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments from the board? No, public comments?
Madam Chair, if I may? You may just want to recognize that there is a healthy amount of comments that you've received, the board.
Received, we all, I believe we all received, and we're all read, and they're definitely heartfelt, so we've, we got them, we've looked at them, but this, uh, project meets the bylaw requirements, and an effort has been made to, um, soften its impact on the neighborhood. No one wishes to speak? Yes, please come forward and give your name.
I'm Ellen Ruland, Two and Fork Tuitt Road. Um, I spoke, uh, the last time, also, I had a walker. Um, I appreciate that they, they did this, but in the meantime, uh, zoning, um, many of us, uh, 65 of us objected outright, based on zoning, based on the proximity to our tidal pond and concerns about water quality and their sewage treatment plant, which is 30 years old, and there hasn't been any, um, proof that this capacity of 85,000 GPU gallons per day, um, compared to the year-round daily average of 30, that those days in July and August wouldn't exceed that 85,000 gallons, so this is still a concern. The biggest concern, it's single-family zoning, it's single-family residential, 17 acres of the Seacrest property is single-family zoning, perhaps it was purchased at a later time. The original part of the Seacrest that was the original casino, summer playhouse, is business-owned, but it's only a slice of that property, about, um, maybe three, no, 17, how many do they have, 20? About five acres is, uh, actually zoned business, so we're talking about, it's really part of the greater neighborhood there, that's our problem. There are also some things, if you bear with me, um, in their initial, in their description tonight, I found some discrepancies, maybe they can clear up, because I think it might not be clear to everyone. Um, when they talk about modifying the existing site, that's currently a parking lot, there hasn't been a tennis court there for as long as people can remember. Um, they've made it sound like, well, it's already something in use and they're making a similar use, it is not, it's a, it's a different use and it's, um, a non-conforming use. Um, it's very close to the water as well. That land, and I have an old picture from the 1940s, uh, the tidal pond used to come in there and it used to get kind of wet, marshy, but back when you could fill land, that was filled in and leveled up to make the tennis court, and there's a riprap wall where it drops down to the tidal pond, I'd estimate it's about five to six feet high, and then there's the marsh grass, um, so it isn't, uh, naturally that high. Um, so they're trying to build on, um, parking area that buses park there now. Um, they also describe it as four townhouse-style duplexes, it's a single-family residential area, duplexes are two-family, and these are not residential, they're commercial for daily rental. Um, my daughter Sarah Buckwalter spoke at the 10-10 meeting to attest that there are no tennis courts there in her memory. Um, the fourth thing in that narrative is, they talk about converting a portion of an existing office building into an additional unit. That existing office building that, that they mentioned is what we call the cottage, it's already a three-bedroom rental on one side, there's an identical front door on the other side that is used for office space, that would be creating another two-family, a duplex, if that office space is made into a three-bedroom, uh, place too. That would be a fifth duplex on the property. That didn't go before conservation, because it's an existing building. So, when these went to conservation, they were described as four cottages, looked innocent enough, I went into conservation, asked for the plans, you, they were just overhead view, and I thought, gee, why are there two driveways to each of these four cottages? It wasn't until the next, um, I think zoning, uh, notice to a butter's, that I looked up of the plans and saw that they were in fact 35 feet high, they were townhouses and duplexes, and each had three bedrooms, or three sleeping rooms, two and a half baths, a washer and dryer, and an elevator, so there are nine total units, um, each with three bedrooms. They say that the net increase in units from the existing 263 units would be nine more, making it two... 290? No. 272? Thank you, I'm, I can't read my own writing, from 263 to 272, that's not true. Each of these has three bedrooms, they're not one hotel unit, one hotel unit, they're comparing to a hotel room with one bathroom. These would be 27 new bedrooms with 27 new toilets, and that is a big increase resulting in 290. They also are counting that three-bedroom existing cottage as a unit, that has three bedrooms, so add two more to that. Okay, those are the things that weren't clear in their narrative, and I just wanted to point out, we object to the project in total, I think all of us here tonight have stated that, 65 of us wrote a letter saying we object outright, we hope you received it, it was copied to you.
We did receive it, thank you, and those are serious objections, if true, um, Kevin Clower, would you like to reply to that?
Can I just ask one question? Uh, Jed, uh, where does this go from us?
Well, after, after this, if, if you approve the site plans, they still have the hearing before the zoning board of appeals for the use.
Yeah, so a lot of these issues...
Is for the zoning board.
That's for the zoning board.
Right.
I mean, we're, we're, our issue is landscaping and lighting.
The exterior, yes.
Yeah, the exterior, so...
Thank you. Uh, I took a few notes, um, what I'd say is the approvals here are not a blanket approval, we are required to still obtain approvals from the zoning board, and any increase in flow will, uh, require approval from the DEP. We believe, uh, we do have the capacity to address the increase in flow in the existing wastewater treatment facility, but that will of course require DEP's notification and approval. Um, there's been a lot of talk about this being a non-conforming use, which isn't entirely accurate, it's, uh, it's a special permit use, special permit, uh, residential C, rather, which is what this is zoned, and business three, which is the other portion of the property is zoned, both allow for commercial accommodations by special permit. A special permit use is by its very nature not a non-conforming use, it's just a use that requires a special permit from the board. And there's a pretty significant distinction between something that's non-conforming and something that is a special permit use. Um, there's been talk of this being a duplex structure in a single-family zoned area, this is a commercial accommodation, that's what this is being proposed as, commercial accommodations, which you can have, uh, any number of disconnected buildings, it's, you know, you could have one building with 100 units, you could have one building with three units, you could have one building with seven units. We're proposing four detached buildings, each with two units, and, uh, a portion of the existing office to be converted into another unit, so a total of nine new units. Nowhere in our bylaw does define unit by... number of bedrooms or you, or rooms, period, so this is one unit that's being rented out as one unit, it does have multiple bedrooms, but it would still constitute a unit relative to the overall, uh, design and scope of the project.
You're saying that it does fit within the zoning?
Absolutely.
And that the wastewater is adequate? Um, who has checked on that?
So we have, I mean, we have internal reports, but we will, as I said, have to go through DEP for their approval. Uh, nothing that's approved by, whether it be conservation, planning, or zoning, stands as a blanket approval.
Right, so it goes forward from here, and that will be considered?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Anyone else who wishes to speak?
Sarah Buckwalter, 35, Sand Tuitt Road, I am a, a direct-to-butter with a direct view of this project. Um, but the, the issue that we keep coming back to is that there are more plants, this is a 35-foot building, all of these, there's seven single-family homes around this pond right now, this is actually a single-family residential area. They're putting in, again, we said 27 bedrooms technically, uh, multifamily units, but there's no, there's no amount of plants that they can put that actually will shade this, they can't replace a 30-year-old oak tree, or, you know, the, the mature bushes that we have around our properties that are making it a quiet space, and so this is actually going to be not really helped by a bunch of plants that are really even below the garage line. Um, there needs to be, um, I mean, we absolutely object to this, and there's just no way that they can, um, put this up there while it's, you know, and say that these, you know, few little bits of plants are going to be okay. Um, it is, again, close to the water, um, there's going to be a lot of issues with noise and debris, and ultimately, um, we are, uh, we are actually, um, sending, uh, what do you call it, conservation, we are sending a, um, thing to Mass DEP to protest this as well, just so you know. Thank you.
I think what you're hearing is that you've got a couple of more forums that are more appropriate for the objections that you have, that they're not things that we're going to address here, because they're not within our purview. The landscaping and the lighting is, but the, the uses, um, and the wastewater and conservation issues are not, so you're, you're facing more hearings, Kevin.
I would just say, you know, we think the plantings improve the aesthetics pretty dramatically, they will help shield, uh, screen, they will help screen noise and light, and the lighting was redesigned in order to minimize the impact as much as possible. The rail lighting is really something I haven't seen used in a project before, but I think it's a really, uh, unique and inventive way of addressing these light concerns from, uh, creating any sort of excess light pollution.
I appreciate that you've made a good stab at trying to address the concerns.
I have comments.
You have to come forward to the podium, please.
I'm Chris Hall, I live at Ache Tuitt, I'm a director-butter of the Seacrest, and I too see this site from the back of my house. I'd say a couple of things, I think it's a good step towards mitigating some of the problems by putting some of these plantings in, but I notice in the plan, I think they call these out as six-to-eight foot high arborvitae, and arborvitae being a fast-growing and potentially tall-growing tree, I'm wondering whether the Seacrest is planning to let them grow, in which case they would shield the neighborhood a lot further from the construction and the noise, or whether they're planning to keep them trimmed at the six-to-eight foot level. The second thing...
There are all kinds of arborvitae, they're not all the same. Emerald arborvitae are never going to get beyond six feet, thuya arborvitae are going to get 30, 35 feet, so it depends on which arborvitae, and it could be that we could ask the landscape designer to specify the kind, so that, it's true, initially they're going to be young plants, but we all know youth doesn't last very long, and they will grow, if they are thuyas that will reach a good height, they'd be really helpful, so it depends on which thuya you mean.
Well, you're a lot better informed than I am, but that's a thought that came to my mind, is the taller they grow, the, the more mitigation on, on the neighborhood. And then the other point I'll make is, you know, the Seacrest has made changes to the lights and have downward-facing light, I think they're acknowledging the fact that light can travel across the pond, and as goes light, so goes sound, so by acknowledging the fact that the light is going to carry across the pond and cause problems for the wildlife and for the neighbors, I think they're in the same breath saying that the sound could cause a problem too, which, again, with very short plants, they're not doing anything to accommodate the sound problems they're going to cause. Thank you.
Jed, is there anything you'd like to add?
Well, there is a question, because I'm not familiar with the dark American arborvitae, which is referred to on the landscaping plan, so perhaps we could have some clarification as to what type of growth that might include?
Sort of medium, it doesn't get that tall.
Okay. All I would suggest is that, you know, it, at least that's what's listed in the, in the landscaping plan, perhaps there could be a compromise where a different type of arborvitae is used.
So, uh, the, I just was speaking with Greg, and the, the dark American arborvitae does grow, it, you know, the typical arborvitae rate that you'd expect, you know, which I think is usually eight to 12 inches a year, um, to the extent that there was any trimming here, it would be, uh, limbing in the sense of if something was precarious, otherwise we are in conservation jurisdiction, so any, any trimming would require their approval, they don't allow trimming for the sake of trimming. Um, and, um, I just think, uh, you know, in, in the immortal words, uh, words of, uh, George, George Bailey, uh, Ms. Harris, the youth is wasted on the young, uh, that's what I thought of when you said that, but, um, you know, these, these trees aren't going to be young forever, they will continue to grow, and they'll continue to grow effectively in perpetuity, um, and they, they can't be trimmed or cut down in any meaningful way without approval of conservation.
One more comment, yes?
Hi, I'm Pat Cohane, I'm at Seven Taunset Road, Association, and I'm just curious, what is the, the, um, setback from waterfront property where this is on the pond? What is the footage for setback? I thought it was 100, and I'm just curious if this is at 100?
I believe that's under conservation jurisdiction, um, so they would be best to answer that.
Okay, is, can I ask?
I can speak to that.
Okay.
So, there are different setbacks, there, and there are different no-touch areas, depending on the resource area, however, this was impervious surface, um, this was pavement and tennis courts, um, so because of that, there are certain protections, there, the Conservation Commission, much like the zoning board would, with existing non-conformities, allows those to be maintained but not increased, so we actually decreased the impervious surface in this area by 6,000 square feet, that's why there was no required mitigation planting, we actually took the impervious surface down by 6,000 square feet. So the initial plan didn't have any plantings, because conservation wasn't requiring any plantings, because we're actually decreasing, as I said, that impervious area, so because of that, we're not subject to the same setbacks, because we had existing impervious coverage close to the waters.
Okay, but I'd just like to say to reassure people who are here, they may not be required, but they're now on your plan, so once this is approved, that's what you have to do.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yep.
I have another question too, um, and what is the space between the units? How many feet? Is there a requirement for the, a space between the feet, between the units?
No.
Between the structures?
I didn't bring, I didn't bring a scale with me, nor would the scale, um... Tim, we're gonna, we're gonna get you an answer in one second.
Okay.
Looked pretty damn close.
Yeah.
15.
Here it comes, that's not for us.
I know.
Uh, it's approximately 15 feet between each structure.
Distance, what's it? Um, I attended the, uh...
Did you say 15?
15. I attended the zoning board of appeals, and there was a woman who spoke, she is a, um, a neighbor on Quaker Road, a neighbor to the Seacrest, and she talked about, uh, the unit on Quaker Road that belongs to the Seacrest that they rent out, it might be that three-bedroom, and she spoke about the noise that comes from that one unit, and she said they are up into the wee hours of the morning with the noise, and she has contacted, her husband has contacted, the Seacrest many, many, many times, and they have gotten no response, um, to address their concerns. So my, my concern is now we're going to have four with good-sized decks, the decks appear to be 16 feet long, some of them are nine feet deep, which, that can accommodate a lot of people, especially young people, and, um, that's going to be a lot of noise, and I don't think the hotel is going to address the complaints of the neighbors. I have a suggestion, why not take the decks off of the side that is facing the pond, put them on the other side, they have little decks on... They have little decks on the Seacrest side. Put the larger decks on the Seacrest side, then that, those, that noise will be facing the Seacrest. It'll still be noise that will be heard by the neighbors, but the Seacrest might be more, more amenable to taking care of the noise if it is affecting their own clientele. That is one suggestion. Another suggestion is to put a fence along the property, the northern property that faces the pond, a significant fence to prevent any of the clientele from using the pond in any capacity. And on the plan, it shows that there is a boardwalk there, and I would suggest taking that boardwalk up so that people do not feel tempted to use the pond.
Is there a boardwalk?
Yes.
On the plan, it shows a wooden boardwalk, it says. Is that still in your plan, the boardwalk?
Yeah, it's on there.
Can that be removed?
I have to speak to the board.
Those are my suggestions. Oh, the other one, no, I have one more. I want to know why it was not thought of, or maybe it was thought of. There is a structure that runs along the northern border. It's a single-story structure. It contains 16 units. And my thought is, why not, instead of putting all of these units right on the pond, why not put a second floor on the existing 16 units? You could end up with 16 more single units, or possibly eight two-bedroom units, and a clever architect could probably make some townhouses out of the end units. Those are...
You've proposed really a whole different plan. I think we need to deal with the plan that we've got here. Any comments from the board on those remarks?
Thank you.
Yeah. Not only on those remarks, but I would like to see the taller arborvitae.
I don't think we have any objection to...
Six to eight feet just doesn't quite cut it, I think.
So what is it you'd be looking for, Ms. Kerfoot? Just so, what is it you'd be looking for, just so?
I'd say probably that can grow to 12 feet at least, don't you think?
These are, these are six to eight feet at initial planting, and then they'll continue to grow.
I'm sorry, I thought that was the...
And how fast do they grow per year? You said it, but not now.
I believe it's usually around eight to 12 inches, eight to 10, eight to 12 inches a year.
Eight to 10 inches a year.
Yeah. That's height upon installation, Ms. Kerfoot.
So what is the tall extent, the height extent?
I mean, it's, it's going to be predicated by natural factors, wind, rain, you know, but it's probably going to be 12, 14, 15 feet tall.
Yeah, the dark Americans are going to get to 12 to 14, but you can get thuyas that are much taller.
If I can address just one comment that was made about why didn't we do the existing building along the north? I think, I'd be happy to address that, which is, this is a velocity zone. So a significant improvement to that structure would require that that entire structure be lifted to meet flood zone standards the way these duplexes are. So even if you were able to add a second story, you know, we'd be looking at a lot of the same issues with that building going up in a significant manner.
Ted?
Okay. Thank you for the clarification on the trees. I would like to see the boardwalk removed. This is a coastal bank. And that invites the use of the pond if you have people along there, because it is right on the coastal bank. You don't want people walking down that coastal bank. They're not supposed to. And so I don't know what other mitigation you could use there to prevent people from walking down the coastal bank.
Well, we will have that row of arborvitae's and plantings along that edge of the pond. I think that's going to do an awful lot to deter, and if there is, in fact, a drop-off, that is in and of itself a natural deterrent.
But I would like to see the boardwalk removed.
I don't think we have any problem with that.
Can I just ask a question? Did the Conservation Commission have any concern with the boardwalk?
Linda, could you speak up?
I just asked if the Conservation Commission had any concern with the boardwalk being on the coastal bank.
No, because it's there and has existed since prior to conservation.
It's already been, it's already there?
Yes.
Oh, it's existing?
Yeah. That's not something we were looking to add. I did forward a copy of the order of conditions to your file today.
Any other, any other comments?
Sometimes conservation would have something to say about ripping up something that's existing.
Right.
Really not our...
Yeah, yeah, it's not us anymore.
Not our property.
We're happy to make the request of conservation. If we run into an issue, we'll come back.
If I may appoint, I forgot to bring up before, I just wanted to mention at the ZBA hearing last week, I think that the issue came up that the original special permit hasn't been located. So we don't actually know what the terms and conditions of the original special permit that allowed the Seacrest to be where it is today and the way it is today. And I would recommend, before anybody approves anything, that document is located so we can understand what conditions were set before.
I think the board has made an assumption that if the plan got here, it's been thoroughly checked by the offices that need to check it, and the special permit exists. Is that a safe assumption?
Well, and I think it's just a topic of purview. So the planning board is restricted to exterior improvements, the landscaping, the lighting. The special permit and the question of whether or not the special permit was there or not there, that's a question for the ZBA to answer. So that topic will be addressed by the Zoning Board of Appeals, not the Planning Board. But again, if they have any issues, and even if you were to grant approval and they have issues with the Zoning Board of Appeals, they still need to come back and do any sort of modifications based on the issues that they encounter at the Zoning Board of Appeals. So nothing is set in stone. It's just a step in the process.
Because we have, always have that caveat, any condition, anything that changes from this plan that we approve would have to come back to us.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, then, are we all set? One more.
My name's James Bezra. I'm at 26 Nauset Avenue West, looking directly across Potter's Hole at these proposed structures. These buildings are qualitatively and quantitatively different from the rest of the Seacrest. They are hyper-concentrated in terms of their occupancy. They have washers and dryers. You're adding 54 new sleeping bodies with this plan. You are nearly doubling the number of buildings on Potter's Hole. And you're doing this by doing a special permit on top of a special permit. And I don't think that that's right. I don't think it's acceptable, and particularly since we don't know what conditions were placed on the granting of the original special permit. And I think that some homework needs to be done before anything here is approved. Thank you.
I think procedurally what we're doing is a site plan approval. We're not dealing with uses. Kevin?
Nothing really further to add.
Oh, I thought you were coming forward to speak.
I'm here in case you have questions.
No, I think that, I know you don't feel happy about it, but I think that you've made clear where your positions are. I hope we've helped you in clarifying the process that you need to go forward with for the kinds of complaints that you want to make. Each one of the boards has a jurisdiction, and we don't cross over from our jurisdiction to somebody else's jurisdiction. It's just not what we do. So that we're here about landscaping and lighting tonight, and as far as I can see, we're comfortable with what has been proposed. We had a few issues that really won't go to us. They'll go to the Conservation Commission to request a waiver on the traffic analysis. Did you want to discuss that?
So that is, that is a part of what the planning board needs to consider this evening. So part of site plan review, an applicant is required to file analysis of proposed traffic impacts. They do have the ability to ask for a waiver, and the applicant has done that in an email, I believe, that everyone's received.
Yes.
In addition to that is the, they're asking for your approval of their perspective that they are exempt from the coastal pond overlay district. That gets into the weeds a little bit about the sewage flow, but as I mentioned to you previously, they are under a wastewater approval from Mass. E.P., so the local Board of Health review is really not happening. It happens at the state level. So they're essentially just asking for those two things from the board this evening.
Did you follow that? Okay, so what we are going to do is to ask the staff to prepare a positive draft decision for our next regularly scheduled meeting, which because of town meeting, won't be until the end of November.
November 28th, right?
Right.
Is it our understanding that the applicant will be proposing a different arborvitae on the landscaping plan, potentially removing...
Would be conditioned on that.
Also removing the boardwalk?
The boardwalk is pre-existing. I don't, I don't...
If it can be removed, I think it should be removed. There is that if, we don't know.
We can make that request of conservation. I'm not sure we'll have a resolution to that by the 28th, but that could be a condition that we at least seek removal.
Let's see, we can put that in our determination.
Of course, no, that's us, yeah.
If is the big word there.
Carries a lot of weight.
They may not have jurisdiction to be able to pull it up.
With regard to boardwalk, I walked along that this afternoon, and my reaction was it prevents people from going into the pond, because there's a railing there. But I'm not opposed to taking it out or leaving it. I've just observed that.
We don't have a strong feeling on it either way, is what I'm hearing from our team. If the board would like to see it removed, would be happy to seek removal of it. I kind of share your opinion, Mr. Dryer. I think that serves as sort of, you know, it provides a stable surface for people to walk along in that area rather than being on the coastal bank without necessarily going down to the water, because there's no access provided. But would be happy to, if the board wants it removed, we can seek its removal.
Hearing that, Pat, have you changed your mind?
I think its existence encourages the walking along there and the going down the coastal bank.
But it also holds the land.
And I understand, and I don't know the answer to that.
We can ask conservation, and if conservation would like it to stay for that reason, we can report back.
Fine. I'm bringing it up as a potential issue.
I just have a question about the boardwalk, because in this plan, it looks way more significant than the existing boardwalk. So are you adding, are you changing this, or are you just leaving what's there?
Leaving what's there.
That's it, you're not adding anything else? Okay, that's just what I want to know.
Right, so I think what remains for us to do is to approve the waiver.
Correct. And just to indicate to staff if you're okay with the lighting plan as presented.
I believe we are. Okay, so could you propose move for the waiver?
And that's for the traffic impact analysis?
In this note, okay, I move that we accept the requested waiver for a traffic study.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we approved the waiver, we requested a positive motion.
Yes.
And we will act on that motion at our next meeting.
And I'm also hearing that perhaps you are in agreement with the applicant regarding the applicability of the coastal pond overlay district. There's also my interpretation as well, is that it doesn't apply based on the fact that the language in the existing bylaw allows for the exemption, and it's covered by a state agency.
And that's just an application of the existing bylaw. That's it.
Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate your time, and good luck at our meeting.
Thank you.
But I'm not done yet, so I'll see you in half an hour.
Okay, well, what had been first on...
I didn't mean to exclude everything, sorry.
While the room is clearing, I move that we return to the original agenda order.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi there. I'm good.
Well, the grievance to Bo Moon Seagrove Incorporated Site Plan Review Modification. Eliminate the outdoor dining deck that was previously approved and installed first-floor pervious patio, 169 Main Street. We've been over this pretty thoroughly. The, we've got an issue with it that I think that you're familiar with. The engineering division has pointed out that the site plan is missing a surveyor's stamp. And I know, Mr. Ima, that you have, your opinion is that we could overlook that, but that's not how the rules read. So it's a question of the rules applied uniformly and consistently to all applicants. So we're going to take up the matter of, are we requiring the surveyor's stamp? Would you like to speak to that? We had your letter.
Ms. Harris, I'd like to speak to the issues you've raised, and then we can get back to the, to the plan. I've put on the screen above you regulations from two sources. The most important one, actually, is the planning board's site plan review, plan requirements. Now, let's look at what it says right up here in yellow. A little bit small, I'll tell you what it says. The site plan required for special permits and site plan review shall be prepared by either a professional engineer, land surveyor, or landscape architect who is registered in Massachusetts. That's what your regulation says. There is a qualification in that sentence that refers to land court regulations, but those have to do with land court plans being recorded. We're not talking about here about a plan to be recorded. We're not talking about a plan being prepared for any conveyancing purpose. What the bylaw regulation says is it may be prepared by a registered engineer. Now, Mr. Cornoch has gone beyond these regulations, which are clear on their face, and said, yeah, but a professional engineer can't plan, prepare a site plan, despite what this bylaw says, your regulation. And he has referred to a, to this statement, which is in a source he obtained from the state. And the first paragraph up here talks about why a professional engineer cannot certify a site plan. But if you get to the bottom of the page, this language is one of the exceptions for it. And it says, the exception to the rule is if there's a professional land surveyor who is a member of the project development team, and the survey was commissioned for this project, and the professional engineer's work is added to said survey. A complete design package submitted by the project development team would include the survey stamped by the PLS and the engineering plan stamped by the PE, indicating the survey as background information. Well, as you know, in this file, we have the existing conditions plan prepared by Steve Cartwright, professional land surveyor. That's part of this submission. And Mr. Borselli has, with Mr. Cartwright's permission, and after conferring with Mr. Cartwright about this project, I'm going to show you one more thing if I can come up with it. Yeah, that's not it. Well, we have submitted to the board, and I have it actually, it's on the thumb drive in my pocket, but we've already submitted to, to you, Mr. Borselli's certification. It says, "I certify that all the information shown on the attached plan prepared by the undersigned registered professional engineer about existing conditions, property lines, location of all structures, lot coverage, setbacks, abutters, et cetera, were taken with permission of Stephen W. Cartwright, PLS, from Mr. Cartwright's plan entitled Existing Conditions Plan in Falmouth, Massachusetts, Prepared for Amantclawer LLP, dated July 29, 2022, prepared by RAS Associates, previously filed with the planning board and attached to the..." to this plan and made a partner of." And that all said information matches exactly what is shown on the Cartwright plan of July 29, 2020. That's, uh, so, um, I'll go back to that regulation, and we've complied with it. Mr. Cartwright's plan was done commissioned for this project. He is part of the team, and the professional engineer, Mr. Borselli, has added his work to that, uh, that survey. And on that survey, there is a reference that it's, that the information is taken from Mr. Cartwright's, uh, plan. Now, to repeat, your regulation says your site plan for site plan review can be prepared by a professional engineer. Mr. Borselli believes that he has complied with the professional standards, which I've repeated here, and he's able to do what he did, and he did it. I don't think it's up to the town planner to say, no, this professional engineer's plan, we won't accept. That's just not right. We complied with your requirement. We've submitted a site plan with a professional engineer's stamp. We also have submitted a plan, of course, existing conditions plan, which is where it counts, with the registered land surveyor's plan. And I don't believe that you would even need the new professional engineer's plan, because we've submitted plans done by a professional landscape architect, Dan Saleen, who is also registered in the state and therefore meets the same standard. So I'd like to now show you the terrific plans for this project, and the planning board should approve this project.
Well, I don't have a copy of that. Do you have copies of that? I can't read it from here.
Yeah, okay. I have a copy, I think. I have this copy.
I can also try to make it larger for you.
It's in the book.
It's in your books. The regulations are in your books.
This is in the back of your books? In your, oh, where in the back? Okay, thank you.
Now, if, if you have other regulations that differ from your regulation, I'd like to know what they are.
Madam Chair, may I?
Please.
So there is one item that we flagged. The new site plan references a distance from the new, uh, handicap accessible walkway to the property line.
This is a change in dimensions.
Correct. It's a new dimension that is shown on the plan, the new existing, or the, uh, the new proposed site plan. The old survey plan did not have that. It had a deck extending all the way to the edge of the property line. This is a new dimension which shows the distance from a structure to a property line, which requires a registered land surveyor's stamp of approval. And that is the issue at hand here. The, the previous proposed site plan was a deck that covered the entire distance. It didn't have that measurement on the plan, and that's why we're asking that a stamp be required.
And we are in need of the plan as it will be the plan and as it is built, and particularly where.
My friends.
There's been such interest in this.
First of all.
Project, there's likely to be real scrutiny of all the paperwork behind it. Jim?
I thought the requirement was for a registered land surveyor or landscape architect.
So the landscape architect plan does not show that measurement.
So we just need the plan revised?
If you'd like us to add that to that plan, we can do that. I mean, if you can try to find reasons to delay this.
We're not finding reasons to delay. The requirement, as I understand it, is when you show a dimension from a property line, that needs to be certified by a registered land surveyor.
That line doesn't exist today. That's a proposed, uh, proposed.
The property line doesn't exist?
No, the deck doesn't, the handicap ramp doesn't exist.
If, if that's true, every building shows its reference to the property line.
Correct.
So then you're saying it always has to be done by a registered engineer, if there's anything that shows a distance from a property, land surveyor. You know, you guys didn't, I brought this up a while ago, and you all threw me out of the room, because you'd have a different.
No, it's the same thing. And I was.
No, but you, you, you basically said I was totally wrong, and it's okay, and they should be able to use, uh, a licensed landscape architect, and that's what we've always done.
So, so to be clear, that is the reason why we've spent so much time with a lot of these plans, is because, Jim, you brought that up to our attention. We identified the fact that we need to hold everyone to that rule, and this is the rule that we're trying to hold to, is that when you show a property line, a setback from a property line, that has to be done by a registered land surveyor.
Every single site plan shows a setback from a property line.
We typically get plans with two stamps on them.
Correct. So you have an engineer's stamp on them.
So you're saying that it is a requirement, then?
It depends on what the site plan is certifying.
Well, I recall the conversation before, and we did it, when I brought this up, oh, no, no, only when there's a transfer of land, and we never do that, Jim, and you're, you're crazy. We're always do just an engineer's plan with site plan, but now you're saying if it shows a setback to an existing property line, it has to be by a licensed land surveyor?
That's our understanding.
That's a change.
But it apparently isn't the professional engineer's understanding, and I don't think it's up to the planning board to say, oh, we don't agree with the professional engineer who has certified the plan.
That's just wrong.
This is a change made because you brought it up.
Well, we, and for, for the record, we never said anything about a transfer of property. That's, that's not what we were saying. But we can, we could debate that topic at a later date. The point I'm trying to make is that our understanding is when there's a dimension shown from a setback from a property line, you're supposed to have a stamp from a registered land surveyor.
But let's be clear, every site plan shows a dimension from a property line. So this isn't a unique thing that's come up. Every single site plan we look at shows a setback from a property line.
And you typically have a stamp.
This isn't a nuance, it's.
And you typically have a stamp from a registered land surveyor on those site plans.
So let's answer the question, is it possible, Jed, that a landscape architect can relabel this so it includes that dimension?
I don't believe so.
I don't think we can have this kind of review of, of, the plan has been stamped by a professional engineer. It, therefore, it is not up to, to people, or this isn't the Board of Registration, it's not up to this board to say, you shouldn't have stamped it. We have a plan that meets the standard, um, that is set forth in the town code, on the, on your website. It is a plan that is, that is prepared by a professional engineer, a professional landscape architect, or a professional, um, land surveyor. We've met your requirement, and there is no information that's needed, uh, that is helpful to the board or the planning board. We are debating a, a regulatory matter, which your regulations say it can be prepared by Borselli, and he's done it.
Well, it seems to me that you have the best of it, Mr. Ament. John, do you want to comment on this?
I agree with what Jim's saying, that definitely we've always, we should have the land surveyor's stamp on there.
Well?
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't understand why they don't want to do it. It doesn't make any sense.
Oh, we would.
But keep in mind, that's every time we get a site plan, from now on, it has to have a, okay? And before, when I brought that up, you guys.
I think you should change your regulations.
What I've already said.
I think you should change your regulation if that's the case, because this regulation that was on the board provides for an exception which, which Borselli feels felt comfortable signing the plan.
I think it's important to point out the fact that the regulation is a broad statement. It does not refer specifically to this matter. And again, it is not just the planning department that has flagged this. Your engineering division also flagged this.
And the engineering department gave you, there, said it was up to you whether you wanted to accept the plan.
Yes, I read that part.
Deferred to you.
It does appear to contradict this section 300 dash 13.
Because that statement is incredibly broad. It basically says a site plan can be prepared by any one of those professionals.
Broad or not, it's still the regulation.
And then, in fact, it can be prepared by at least the professional engineer if you comply with the regulation that I've shown you.
So again, Attorney Ament referred to, and we've researched and sent to you, everyone, the Board of Registration has frequently asked questions. One of those questions is, can a registered, or a professional engineer certify, uh, work done by, I'm misquoting it, but a land surveyor? And yes, to Attorney Ament's point, yes, if they're working on the same development team and they've created the same plan. The issue at hand here is it's not the same plan. The old plan had a deck covering that entire distance. This new plan now shows a dimension from a property line to a new walkway.
It's a plan all based on the information from the registered land surveyor's plan, which is what the regulation refers to.
Which does not show that dimension at all.
It would still leave us with a plan that was not the plan that was.
That dimension is not present in the registered land surveyor's plan.
Well, we could take it off the plan if you would like. We don't need that dimension on the plan.
I think we're going to go with the two stamps. So, let's see where that puts us.
So I hope that the board will agree that the plans that have been submitted are sufficient, as I think they are, but I'd like the, uh, board to review at this meeting, the new plan prepared by Horiuchi Saleen, and I'd like the board to vote on this. And if you feel that we have to make an amendment to the plan or get another stamp, we will endeavor to get it, but I think you could approve it with the condition that, that the plan be stamped. We have had difficulty communicating with, uh, Mr. Cartwright, um, and, but we're still hopeful we can get that. And obviously, to respond to, to Mr. Drewley, uh, we're not trying to be difficult. What we're trying to do is to get a project approved, as we've been working on for an awfully long time, and this issue, which I think should be a non-issue, is just holding that up.
Let's look at the plan.
Thank you.
There's actually a part on the plan that I don't think that I can read very well or very, very easily, and it's where, um, I can see where the, um, from the rendering, where the black, uh, steel fence lines, the horizontal lines will be. Where is the black coated chain link fence beginning and ending?
Well, so presently, Madam Chairman, there is a, uh, six foot tall rusted, uh, chain link fence in considerable disrepair that extends all the way from the sidewalk on Main Street. All the way to the coin shop, which is back here, this building.
Right.
And this, so, this is the location of, that is shown in this dash line. That'll be removed. We won't need the fence on the town's property, uh, with the construction of the patio, because the patio will include a cable railing system that is on, uh, this east side of the patio, also on the south side of the patio that's here. So we don't need the town's, uh, we don't need to replace that, and it will be much more attractive without it. We do need a fence in this area because the patio ends.
Say that again, I missed your words.
We need a fence over here because the patio ends here, and there's a drop off of about five feet.
Okay.
To the land below. So we're proposing to put on the town property, with the permission of the select board, a four-foot black, uh, vinyl-covered, uh, chain link fence.
So it goes just from the corner of the, of the patio?
It's just from this corner, right here.
Yeah.
To the end of the stone wall. So that, that's what that is. Uh, there is a, um, detailed landscape plan with the, uh, plant species called out. The, um, benches, new benches would be installed, new bike rack in this area. And there's an exi- as you know, an existing sidewalk that provides access, uh, to this alley now, and it will, uh, be rebuilt to provide, um, a second means of access with a couple of, uh, one step and two risers here to the patio, which of course is also accessed from Town Hall Square. So. Any other questions about the plan?
I do have one more question. Is there any access to the patio from, uh, from the rear?
We haven't, uh, included in this plan, uh, is, we've had a little bit of discussion. It would make sense because we have a, a row of, um, of, uh, stone, um, forming a, a small wall, less than three feet, and then another row with landscaping in between. It'd be pretty easy to put some steps up here, and it might make some sense to do that. We're not showing it on, we have, we're not asking for it now.
Because there was a concern of the abutters, that in, um, some kind of a crisis, they might need to, uh, exit from that area?
Well, you know, this is a, we have this, um, you're talking about the, uh, the, uh, abutters, residential abutters needing to exit this way? Well, as you know, that they don't have the right to do that, but also there is a perfectly good path that is on the west side of the bowling alley building.
Yeah.
That leads right out. This would be easy to have, have steps up to it, but we haven't designed for it. If you think we should, we could do that. We'd change the plan to show it. We'd put a, we'd have, um, just, you know, three or four foot wide with a gate right here, and instead of landscaping here, um, we could easily turn this into steps. It's not, it's, it's only going up four feet, and it has, uh, two levels already.
But you'd need stairs. Other members of the board, any comment?
I don't want stairs.
You don't want stairs?
No.
What did you say, Pat?
I don't want to see stairs there. I like the landscaping as it is. I think that would be quite lovely, and if you take away half of it to put stairs, you're losing the pretty landscaping there, that people who are eating on the patio can enjoy seeing.
Pat? I agree with Pat. Like, I always get concerned about stairs. Sort of at a midway point. It's not like it's starting at the bottom, right bottom, and moving up. This is sort of like a clump of stairs, and it doesn't seem to have a reason to be there. Paul?
I just have one comment on landscaping. I understand that that'll be on town property, and you need permission from the select board. Who's going to be responsible for maintaining the landscaping?
We will propose to the select board that the owner of the property, and therefore the tenant, that is, Mr. Rashardi and Blue Moon Seagrove, uh, will be responsible for maintaining, maintaining that area of Town Hall Square for as long as the license is in effect, hopefully for many, many, uh, years.
Should that be part of the conditions?
Well, remember that we already have a site plan review decision. Our expecta- and, uh, because this plan is subject to the approval of the select board, and will be respons- this, uh, select board will really be, is responsible for the work on the town property, um, and everything about this plan on the town property surely will be carefully reviewed by the DPW, and we'll have a license agreement. It will spell out the. It will spell out the obligations, but it's our expectation that we, the tenant, will be responsible for the installation and the maintenance. And, you know, we're working with a very good landscape architect and trying to do what will end up being a wonderful job in this corner of Town Hall Square.
Thank you.
John?
I would prefer to see the steps myself. I don't see any reason not to have other means of egress. And maybe in our decision, we could leave it up to them whether they put the steps in or not. Some of us want it, some of us don't want it, but maybe the decision could reflect on if they can put them in if they want or not put them in if they don't want to.
Well...
They may find that they want to put them in, otherwise they're going to work it.
I think if the Planning Board wants us to put them in, we will want to put them in. I think we'll put them in if that's what you'd like.
There's already two means of egress, out the front and to the side and to the parking lot, without climbing any stairs at all. So, what it would give would be really a third avenue of exit or a crisis entrance across the patio?
Well, remember that those steps are going to lead to this rail, cable railing system, and a patio that's filled with tables and people.
Yeah, tables and people.
You know, there'd be times when, obviously, for control of the space, you know, the use of those stairs would likely be limited almost always to the management. And it could be useful to have, the trash is going to be down below there, as you know.
I think, John, your suggestion of making it optional so that they can, if they wish, but they don't need to return over anything like it?
It's optional, we'd like that, great, just great.
Right.
Yeah, I'm ambivalent. If it's something that, once they get into the whole project, they decide, well, maybe it is a good idea, then I'm fine with that. But if they don't, I'm fine with that, too.
Right.
I feel the same way. There may be a use for it, but I think we're getting really into the weeds here in little details, and we should let their landscape architect and the owner decide what they want. I like it either way.
I think it's a good plan. It's a nice landscape plan.
Yeah.
Right. So, we're back to the stamp. We have one way to go, and it's really up to the Board to say we're going to approve it and condition it on getting the stamp, or at least we're getting a stamp. And that way, it's flexible on their timing. So, if they're quick about it, they can go like, "Oh," and if they're not, it's their problem, but they're not waiting on us.
I just have a question. Does this mean that every time we look at a special permit, and it has a setback from a building to a property line, which you referenced, it now has to be stamped by a land court surveyor?
Yes.
That would be a lot of traffic, it would throw me out of the room.
Madam Chairman, I don't have any, you know, that's a policy, that's a future, but we've complied with the policy that's written. And I think that while we may be able to get you the plan stamped by the professional land surveyor, I don't think it's right to make that requirement applicable to this presentation.
Well, but we're saying it's a different plan. It's a change in the plan, and the dimension has changed and it's not noted. And we need the stamp.
I move that we put requirement as a condition on our approval that we're going to consider tonight as a condition.
May I?
Mm-hmm.
And I want to be as clear as possible. I in no way want to delay the applicant or delay the application. I think what they're doing here is fantastic. But I would caution you on approving something that isn't approvable, in my opinion, at this point, because you don't have a plan that's complete. Conditioning the approval is somewhat confusing because I'm not sure what we do. We issue this approval based on the fact that we, I don't even know even sure what plan we attach to the approval, and we're sending this to the Building Commissioner with something that's incomplete. So, I would caution you on approving something before it's ready to be approved.
I misunderstood something. I thought we were approving the plan that we've got before us, and the only thing that needs to be added to it is a dimension.
The stamp.
Stamp.
And the stamp.
Stamp.
But if it had the dimension on the stamp, it would be the plan. Is that correct?
Yes, no. So, to be totally correct, it just needs the stamp. It already has the dimension.
It has the dimension.
It just needs the stamp.
Which is why we need the stamp.
And what makes you think you don't have a plan?
Because you don't have a certification on that plan from a land surveyor indicating that that measurement...
We are conditioning that plan on getting the surveyor's stamp, and if it can't be stamped by the surveyor for whatever reason, then that was the condition, and it's no longer approved, because that is a firm condition. I don't see how you don't have a plan.
Perhaps I'm just misunderstanding. Maybe what I'm hearing from you is that the Board is in approval of the application. You're not formally reading a decision into the record until you have the plan that has the stamp. Is that what I'm hearing?
So, I didn't know that was one of our possibilities.
Isn't it possible to approve this plan with a condition that a professional land surveyor's stamp be obtained on it? That's all.
That's all, that was...
I mean, we...
But again, what we're doing is we're sending, so the actual decision is sent to the Building Commissioner, and attached to it is a plan that doesn't have the required certification. So, you're sending to the Building Commissioner approval of something that is not complete yet, and so...
And he has other things on his desk, and he can wait for the stamp that he knows he has to have before it's fully approved.
So... Which is the same thing as us waiting for the stamp to come in.
Yeah.
And then you reading the decision into the record once the stamp's...
Madam Chairman, that just means we have another hearing to come to, and once we have that plan, we have to then schedule it again, and it's unnecessary. The town planner is saying he doesn't want to delay things, but the decisions being made exactly have that effect, and it's not necessary. You actually have the authority to waive requirements. At least you do under the subdivision control law. This isn't subdivision control law, but that's even more strict. And Section 81R of Chapter 41 is titled, "Waiver of Strict Compliance with Rules and Regulations," and it starts off saying, "A planning board may, in any particular case where such action is in the public interest and not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the law, subdivision control law, waive strict compliance with its rules and regulations." You know, you have some discretion here, and I'm suggesting as a compromise, we'll go along, we'll do what we need to do to get the surveyor's stamp. We may have to hire another surveyor to do that. We'll do that, but let's move this along.
That's what we're trying to do here.
I know you're trying to do that, and that's, and I think you should.
Well, do we have a motion to act on? I don't think we've heard a second.
We do, but we didn't hear a second yet.
Well, what's our alternative here?
Wait for that site plan to arrive with the land surveyor's stamp.
So, we'd have to move for a continuance?
That's right.
I have a question.
We would continue the hearing, or the meeting, I should say.
Can we have our planner, the administrator, approve if the stamp was on the drawing or not, so we don't have to come back to another hearing?
Happy to do that, but you do need to have some sort of approval of a decision. So, you do have a draft decision before you.
We do.
We do.
I...
And we would hold on to the approval until a plan with a stamp has arrived.
Which you can approve. Doesn't have to come back to us again.
This is really administrative approval.
Yeah, it's an administrative, it needs a stamp.
I don't think it has to come back here.
I don't want to hear this again.
I think we just do administrative approval and be done with it.
Right.
There's no disagreement.
Well, it just took us a while to get there.
Even though we haven't taken a vote, it would appear we have a majority of the Board that doesn't want to have to hear this again, wants to approve it, wants it to get the second stamp, and now we're just arguing about the language to get there. Is that right?
Discussing, I would say.
Discussing.
No argument.
All right, I'll take my motion off the table.
How does that help?
Because it says we don't have to vote on whether you want this before we approve, or, you know, that it has to be there.
I'm hearing...
Which our town planner feels uncomfortable about doing in that manner.
Let me try something. I move that we approve the plan subject to our planner administrative...
You suggested, we're not gonna vote on this. Yeah, go ahead. You move that...
I, what did I say wrong?
Then you'll make the motion that we actually vote on.
That we approve the plan.
Didn't I say I was making the motion? That we approve the plan?
Yeah, but we haven't read that yet.
I'm confused. Go ahead.
What you're suggesting is that we make the motion and approve it, and we add, then it's your next phrase that's important, then you do what?
Can I suggest some language?
Donny.
Why don't I just say that you already have, by the way, you already have a four-page decision in your file, which gives all the reason to approve it, and you could just add a condition at the end that says, "The site plan shall be stamped by a professional land surveyor, and the decision shall be held by the, shall be delivered to the Building Commissioner upon receipt thereof."
Good. So, we're going to read the decision that was drafted for us, we're going to add an amendment, and Bob, do you want to read it?
Not really, but I will. Motion.
Bob, did you, did you get what Bob said as an additional?
No, I didn't get a chance, I was looking for my pen.
Okay, you're gonna have to provide that again, Bob.
Wait till he gets to it.
Yeah.
Wait till he gets to it, right.
Did you write it down, Pat?
I started to, but my brain froze about midpoint.
Okay. Motion that the Planning Board votes to approve the application of Blue Moon Sea Grill, Inc., to modify the previous site plan review approval on February 28, 2023, to now develop a Class 1 restaurant with an outdoor patio at 153 Main Street under Section 240, 12.2, Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw. Findings, the applicant is proposing to modify the previously approved site plan review application by constructing a first-floor previous patio with fully accessible ramp rather than the previously requested 91-foot by 14-foot wooden deck. Additionally, there are now 59 seats proposed on the patio, while 78 seats are proposed inside of the restaurant for a total of 137 seats. Previous approval included 130-seat restaurant. Therefore, this modification represents an increase of seven seats, three outside and four inside. Lot coverage by structures will now only increase from the existing 58.3% to 59.97%, negating the need for the previously approved special permit, which allowed for lot coverage to exceed 70% in the Business 1 V1 district. The applicant received a variance from the Select Board for the Flow Neutral Bylaw stamped in with the Town Clerk on August 25, 2022, which allowed 130 seats. In order to have an occupancy of 137 seats, the applicant will likely need to receive an amended variance from the Select Board. The property's dumpster will be relocated and enclosed by a stockade fence, as shown on the proposed site plan, according to correspondence received with the modification application. The property owner may be able to establish a broader prescriptive easement for access to the dumpster from Daybon Inc., owners of 131 Main Street, based on the decades of documented access. If not, the property owner also owns 23 Town Hall Square, known as Timber Axe Bar, and the dumpster at 23 Town Hall Square could be used for the subject property's trash disposal. The applicant has committed, as a condition of approval, to make a good-faith effort to prohibit or minimize employee parking on Main Street within Town Hall Square and other nearby downtown public lots during peak business periods. As all of, as all of the proposed landscaping is proposed on town property, the applicant intends to seek a license from the Select Board for permission to implement said improvements. Therefore, all details of the proposed improvements, type of plantings, bench and bike rack materials, future maintenance, et cetera, will be under the purview of the Select Board rather than the Planning Board, as would generally be the case with site plan review. The new use Class 1 restaurant is a byright use in the Business 1 V1 district, and the construction will be limited to the 153 Main Street portion of the property. The applicant conforms to all the requirements found in Section 240, 12.2 of the zoning bylaw conditions. The plan shall be constructed as approved. Two, the applicant shall obtain an approved street opening permit. Three, the project shall not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights of ways, and shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the Building Code as determined by the Building Commissioner. Four, construction of this project shall follow the Town's Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standard Conditions document. Five, upon completion of the construction, the applicant shall post the address for this business per the Town Code 99-1. Six, access to the rear of the building will be limited to trash removal only as specified in the draft license agreement with Daybon Inc. The applicant shall be able to utilize the dumpster located at 23 Town Hall Square for rubbish removal in the event that the future license agreement with Daybon Inc. is never fully executed, terminated, or modified in any way. Seven, at no time shall any delivery of goods or needed services in support of the proposed restaurant occur at the rear of the building. Deliveries shall be limited to hours between 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. Eight, the applicant shall implement policies to prohibit or reduce employee parking on Main Street within Town Hall Square and other nearby downtown public parking lots during peak business periods. Nine, the applicant shall seek approval from the Select Board for the proposed landscaping located on town property. Ten, all construction operations for the onsite work should be maintained on the property. Eleven, the applicant will need to obtain an amended variance from the Flow Neutral Bylaw from the Select Board of the increase in seating from 130 to 137. So, 12 is what the...
That's what Bob proposed.
Yeah, so...
But he's, I only got a portion of it. The site plan shall be...
Yeah.
That was it.
He's got something for you here.
Okay. Okay. The sites, site plan shall be stamped by a registered, by a professional land surveyor registered in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The Board's decision shall be...
Issued.
...issued to the Building Commissioner by the, by the town planner upon receipt thereof. Okay.
Do you want him to pass it down?
And that's that.
Please.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then Bob, can you pass that down?
To approve and...
Okay, I was gonna write it down on, on...
Yeah, but he also needs it.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
I'm just gonna write it, so...
Okay.
There you have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Apple line. Okay, now we come to, oh, we'll wait till we clear the room. Thank you. For our next piece of business, the applicant is Kenneth Sundman for Robert P. Gillis. Site plan review application to construct an accessory apartment within the existing dwelling at 24 Green Pond Road. And speaking for it is the owner.
What we're trying to do is have an accessory apartment within the dwelling at 24 Green Bear with me. Here we go. This is the front elevation. This is, oh, come on now. This would be the proposed accessory apartment. Now, this is on the, this level right here. This is the entry, okay? As you come in, you go up these stairs right here. That would bring you to the main house. It's a living room and kitchen up here. It's a tri-level home. This is the accessory apartment, bedroom, living, kitchen, and bath. The entrance is in the rear of the house, right here. Parking for, I'll probably have that coming up. Okay, this is the proposed floor plan on, I call it Level C. Level A, this is Level A, the accessory apartment area. This foyer right here is shared, well, not real shared, because there's no entry from foyer to the accessory. So, this is how you get into the house, you go up to the main house here. Now, this is the third level. Used to have four bedrooms, now it's just three. Oh, it's just three, and there we go, yeah. Oh, it's just three, and there we go, yeah. I'm breaking your computer.
Making me dizzy, but I'm trying to follow.
All right, hold on, hold on, here we go. So the total number of bedrooms within the whole dwelling is four, which the septic system is designed for, presumably. These are just the, the elevations.
So it's four bedrooms now.
Correct.
And there will be four bedrooms once you converted the garage and the back of it into the accessory dwelling unit because you're reducing the number of bedrooms on Level C.
Right.
Right.
You caught that, huh?
It's a really straightforward project.
Yeah.
What's your plan for the garage door? It will no longer be a garage, what?
No, there'll be no garage door. This is actually, when we get to it. All right, this was the garage door right here.
Yeah.
Very touchy. That is now a window unit. It's a three-onning windows on top with decorative trim down, like panels below, but it's not, it's not a door anymore.
Right. Okay, it's, it's very straightforward, and the staff has already reviewed it, and it meets all of our requirements.
Yeah, it was just, it meets all the dimensions and everything?
Yes, it's 39% of the principal dwelling. You have the parking.
As far as architectural effect, I think it's fine. I don't see anything to talk about.
No, I don't either. It's really a good, clean project.
Oh.
Yeah, I just have a question. I don't mind the hand-drawn sketches, but it should be some, author should be on there. Who prepared those sketches? Is that you or someone else?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's not clear who prepared the sketches. It said it was done for you. So normally, it should be a attribution to someone who prepared those sketches.
Okay, I agree.
That's how we refer to it in the, in the decision.
Okay. Would that be a requirement?
But it is okay for the applicant to do it. That's the whole idea.
Yeah.
You can do it, that's fine, but you should say who prepared it.
Would that be a requirement? You want to see that first?
Sign the drawings.
We, we could put in the decision that the plans were prepared by the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay.
One thing, one thing bothers me about sketches like that is when I was in engineering school, I prepared something like that, and the instructor crossed it all out because I forgot the North Arrow. I noticed you had the North Arrow.
He's been scot.
You didn't mention the locust either.
The North Arrow, the floor plan, all right.
The, the locust isn't there either, but we, I thought I was going to let that slide.
Yeah.
I almost jumped over the table. It took me two weeks to do it, and you just...
Okay.
Any other comments here?
Uh, no, it looks good.
Comments from anyone here? No, it looks, it looks through.
See, when Paul was doing his engineering school, he had a feather and quill, you know. It was a lot of work.
Congratulations.
There were no felt tips in those days. They were red crayons.
Yeah.
Our next step, we never approve something the very same night. I, never, I'm sure there are examples where we have, but that's not our procedure. So we'll request the staff to prepare a positive motion for our next meeting, when we certainly will be approving it. You don't have to come back, but if you, if you want to, please do.
Oh, I'll be here.
Okay.
It's a, thank you very much. It's not till November.
This project.
Here's the problem, though, because, what's the date?
November 28th.
Yeah, it's the 28th because of town meeting interfering with our normal schedule, so November 28th.
28th, okay. All right, very good.
Thank you. Now, we have to open a public hearing to hear a petitioner's zoning article for the November 2023 Annual Town Meeting. And this was brought forward to us before, and we complained about the, the language. They have changed the language. Who will be speaking for this? Mr. Clower.
So, for the record, Kevin Clower. We haven't actually updated the language because I think that the explanation got convoluted. I don't think the proposed language was convoluted. And do we actually have a, just a copy of the petition article on here somewhere? Because I don't...
Let me get you one quick.
I have everything but the actual language of the article. Of course.
We have it, we're just getting it.
Yeah.
There should be some elevator music playing somewhere.
Are you, you don't want me to sing?
You could hum.
Yeah, no.
Okay, there's been a lot of discussion among the, the engineering professionals about this and the water quality people. And there's still a concern that too little is known about the future impact of this. And that therefore, we had better know more about what we're doing before we can move forward with this with any kind of eviction.
So the actual language says that the Special Permit Granting Authority may by special permit waive this limitation, which is in reference to 7.5 gallons per day per thousand square feet of acreage. Waive this limitation if the applicant demonstrates through the use of an advanced treatment system that the proposed nitrogen loading will be equal to or less than the nitrogen loading that would result from 7.5 gallons per day of, 7.5 gallons of sewage per day per thousand square feet of lot area from a standard Title V system. Put more simply, if we're able to demonstrate that the nitrogen that would be released through the use of an advanced system is less than what would be allowed, less than the nitrogen that would be allowed through the use of a traditional system, even if the gallonage is more, that the board could issue a special permit to waive that limitation. That's all we're requesting. We're, we are requesting that the board, in this case, it would be the zoning board of appeals, have some discretion, because right now, it simply says shall not exceed 7.5 gallons per day per thousand square feet. And as we've talked about, that bylaw was written in 1979. What we know about nitrogen, what we know about Title V systems, what we know about advanced systems has come an awful long way in the past 44 years. So the thought process here was that this petition article would provide the board simply with some discretion. It's not a blanket approval. It is not a mandatory approval. It would still be subject to, one, the demonstration that you could reduce the nitrogen, and, two, all of the standards that are still set forth, both for a special permit and for any use within the Water Resource Protection District. So that limits it to certain uses within that district, and also to the standards of 12.1E, which govern all special permits, and includes considerations such as the adequacy of the site in terms of size, the suitability of the site for the proposed use, and the adequacy of method of sewage disposal. As has been noted, we did submit this specifically with the YMCA project in mind, which is to be located off of Brick Hill Road. The current projections require additional land. We can't, our, our proposed discharge is more than would be allowed under that 7.5 gallons per day. This would provide an off-ramp, a potential path forward for the project. There are other possibilities. But this would provide a very straightforward path that would allow a special permit granting authority to, in its discretion, waive that requirement if we're able to demonstrate that the effects of what we, what we would be discharging is less than the effects that would be allowed under a byright discharge use.
It's a public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak to this issue? No. Anyone on the board? Jim?
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of this. I believe that there's been substantial changes, and the numbers have changed radically. I'm not sure I exactly get it, but it used to be like 60%, and now it's down to nine. You know, our whole goal for our future in town is find more adaptive and flexible systems so we don't have to put in sewers. And I think that these nitrification removal systems are improving greatly. And I think this is a, a good amendment. That it puts it in some ability not to have, be so rigid. They can listen to the Board of Health, listen to the scientists, and let the special permit authority make the decision. And I, and that's why I'm in favor of this amendment.
And I'm opposed to it.
You want to speak to that?
I certainly will. If you read Peter McConaty's letter here, he definitely thinks it should be indefinite postponement until more attention is paid to the details of this. When we're told that the Special Permit Granting Authority is the zoning board of appeals, they don't know about our water supply in sufficient detail. The Board of Health should be involved in it. This has been in place for 44 years without a challenge. And full disclosure, my husband was one of the major authors of it. So I've known about this over all those 44 years. Vicki Lowell was involved with writing it. Ken Buckland was involved with writing it. These are people who've made it a lot of their life to know about water and water problems. And this is going to be right above the main source of our water. We've just heard that the Y is going to use more and need more land. Well, it's too iffy that I would want to leave our main water source right now without way more investigation of this, and probably a potential rewriting if we're going to look at making things easier. It's really nice to make things easy, and then you ruin it when you no longer have water. That's good.
Other comments? Jim or Paul?
Well, I would think the Water Quality Management Committee would weigh in on this issue because that's exactly what they've been dealing with for a long time. I don't know where they stand on this, if they've even seen it. So I would propose that we also engage the Water Quality Management Committee under Chairman Peter, I can't think of his last name.
Well, Peter McConaty.
Yeah, no, not.
Well, he's DPW.
Right.
Water quality man.
Yeah.
Pam?
No, I, you know, I think going down the road, we're going to have lots of these issues that we're going to have to deal with. So the quicker we can come to some decisions about the early plans, things like the Y, I think the better off we'll be.
John?
Can I just clarify, because I'm straw polling? Was that, was in favor or not, Pam?
In favor of the amendment or against the amendment?
Did we just vote on that?
No.
No.
No, we have not. We're just discussing right now.
I'll vote when we, we all vote. Okay, John?
I'd be in, in support of the amendment. And the original authors of our denitrification system were certainly well-intended, and it's had a really nice effect on a lot of developments through the years. But things have changed, and they've gotten better. The denitrification systems have gotten better. We had the health agent in here when we had this hearing a couple of weeks ago, and he indicated that it would event, this, this or any other project would eventually wind up in front of the Board of Health. And now they have much more rigid standards, given the knowledge that we have of how denitrification systems work. And there are currently systems that would take out the proper amount of nitrate. And so I think that we should go with the times. It's getting better, and we should support it.
Bob?
See, for me, it would be, what would determine it would be who the Special Permit Granting Authority was, would be. I, I wouldn't want to be that special permitting authority because I don't feel I know enough about this or should make a decision about that. So if there was going to be a waiver, it should be from some other board that has the expertise in this.
So the plan, the zoning board would be, is the Special Permit Granting Authority for special permits within the Water Resource Protection District. However, they seek input from all the other boards, including the Board of Health in any project. There, there are referrals that are sent out to all the departments. So Board of Health will have a chance to weigh in, not only through the referral process, but would also need to have an approval by the Board of Health. This, this would not circumvent the Board of Health approving the, the system. This would just deal with specifically that restriction as to 7.5 gallons per day.
No, I, I don't feel comfortable with it.
And Jim, you already spoke. I don't feel comfortable with it at all. I certainly don't have the expertise to judge it, and I respect the people who have advised us to, to not approve it at this time. The way that there's, everyone wants the Y to go forward in some way. But thinking about the Y, that's just on Brick Hill Road. It's just across the street, really, from the woods that go down to our water supply system. It's a place to be super careful.
Absolutely.
It seems we, we can undo the harm once, once it's done.
So we...
I'm persuaded that we have time to come up with something achieving what you want, but not this way, and get more input before, so that you won't be held up on, on your project. So I would be voting not to approve this, to recommend indefinite postponement.
Okay, if I can speak to that, Ms. Harris?
Um, yeah. Pam?
As Peter McConaty points out, that the composition of sewage varies widely. But this is centered only on denitrification, and there are many other components.
Right, there are all the phosphates.
And guess what pollutes the inland waterways?
Right.
The denitrification systems are only good for when it's going out. It's dealing with salt water or brackish water. When we're talking about inland ponds, and guess what our water supply is?
Yeah.
Phosphorus.
So if I can speak to that real quick, Ms. Harris. We only receive, I only received the memorandum from Peter McConaty about 45 minutes ago. So I hadn't seen that until the end of the Seacrest hearing. So I haven't had a chance really to, to fully process that. However, I, I have the utmost respect for Peter. And Jed and I did have a conversation earlier today where he did indicate he'd be recommending an indefinite postponement. And for reasons that aren't invalid by any stretch of the imagin, any stretch of the imagination, we think that this is an approvable amendment. We think that it serves a real, a real need here. However, I certainly understand the concerns that have been expressed. I haven't really had a chance to, to fully digest the McConaty memo yet. But again, I understand exactly what he's coming from and what, where he's coming from and what he's saying. What I would ask, if this board is going to vote for indefinite postponement, I'd like to really engage with this board over the next few months in order to craft something that this board can be supportive of to bring back for the April town meeting. I don't really know what the process is to engage with the wastewater committee and to engage with DPW, because we don't necess, I can't just reach out to DPW and say, will you weigh in on this proposed bylaw change? It's, you know, there are internal mechanics that are complicated here. So what I would like to do is, if this board, what I'd like to do is have this board vote to, vote to support this. However, failing that, what I'd like to do is really work with this board between now and whenever the warrant articles for April close in February or so, to come up with something that, that has had a chance to be vetted. Because the reality of it is, if we were to bring this back for April, it probably doesn't change our timeline in any dramatic way. But if we're looking at beyond April, it, it does impact what, what the Y is able or even possible for the Y to do. So, you know, if we can, and I'm not looking for a hard and fast commitment, but I'm just expressing what my hope is here, that, that we can use this as an opportunity to further this and, and find a way to, to vet out these concerns. Because I'm not sure what we as the proponents, what the proper steps for us as the proponents of this are to, to address all the concerns that have been expressed by Jed, by you, by, by, by Peter. So, you know, if this can be a cooperative process moving forward, that would be the ideal situation for us.
Well, as it was, Jed and I had a chance to discuss this this morning. So I've seen it for longer than you have. And I was assured at that time that, yes, there would be time before April, so it doesn't ruin the project, to find something where there's some agreement among all of the people who do clearly have the expertise that I at least am lacking, and other members of this board, and perhaps the ZBA are lacking. And I would assume, Jed, that your office would then coordinate this collaboration?
Yes, we would.
And that would be... And that would be the process that we'd use to arrive at something that's acceptable to all of us. And particularly, I'm just really impressed with the experts here in town. Peter McConaty, Mike Righetto, Steve Raftery, Bill Kerfoot. Peter McConaty, people that we know are really deep into this and know what they're talking about, saying that we just need more time to work it out.
You know, the idea is not to have unintended consequences here. And that is what the concern is. And I fully, we are fully cognizant of that. So, you know, in a perfect world, in our perfect world, this would be able to proceed. We understand the concerns. So what we're looking for is the opportunity to really work with the planning board, the planning department, over the next few months.
I think we're all on the same page. So then I don't know that we need any motion at all to do that, do we?
We have to either make a recommendation or we're going to approve it as written or indefinite postponement. That's all, we're voting on those words.
Good. Well, I would like to hear a motion for indefinite postponement.
I agree with indefinite postponement.
John?
Can I mention something?
Yes, please.
We had an applicant in here a couple of years ago for a forty-B development right across the street from Long Pond and across from Brick Hill Road. And that applicant's engineer indicated that the groundwater from that part of the land does not flow into Long Pond. It flows out into the ocean. And if they're going to be putting in system in, they're going to try to put a system in there, they should do the research on that. Because maybe it does not go into Long Pond.
I remember when that came through. In fact, I came right to mind over it because we spent a long time on that very issue. But I don't remember that it didn't, that it didn't flow.
They said the groundwater does not.
That it went sideways to the ocean?
From there, it does not flow into Long Pond.
So what aquifer, what watershed is it in? Is it Little Pond? Is it?
Falmouth Harbor.
Great Pond, Falmouth Harbor? It's more, we have all these watersheds that should be identified.
I understand, but the conversations, it goes right into.
Let's see, what does the map say?
The water maps that I'm familiar with for the town.
It says Little Pond.
All seem to head toward Vineyard Sound, not towards.
So it goes to Little Pond? So it doesn't go to Long Pond, is what you're saying?
I'm not saying.
I'm not saying.
I'm not saying that, just to be very clear.
Where's your, where's the locus on this map?
So.
Isn't that Long Pond right there near the bottom edge of the chart?
I should know the address.
It is.
I'm blanking.
Four eighty-five.
Four eighty-five, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a comment. As the planning board representative to Water Qualling Management Committee, there is a meeting tomorrow afternoon of that committee. And I'd be pleased to discuss it with Peter, with Steve Raftery, who's chair, and others, and come back to the, to the board or to staff as where their position is on this. And I think it's an important element before we make a decision on this.
Great, thank you, Bob.
And I'll be happy to do that tomorrow.
Okay, we have a motion. Jim, you want to?
No, but that's clearly saying, if I'm looking, that it is Long Pond, right?
It says, so it's not a coastal pond overlay? Because if you take off the Water Resource Protection District, that's the locus right there. So it's actually not in the coastal pond. I'm sorry, so it's not in the coastal pond overlay? Because what we're seeing here is coastal pond overlays. But it is in the Water Resource Protection District, which identifies it as.
Well, where's Long Pond? Am I looking at that big pond right there being Long Pond? Yeah, because I brought this up when I didn't want to approve the forty-B development. We approved it anyway, so. It looks like it's clearly a Long Pond watershed.
I will defer to people who.
Well, what does that map say?
Well, it actually doesn't.
Okay, let's get somebody.
Where are you going to vote to have indefinite postponement or not? So.
Are you moving the question?
So I move that we vote for indefinite postponement on this.
Tom, you already moved it, you seconded it.
Oh.
You're ready for the vote.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of indefinite postponement?
Aye.
Aye.
Along with everybody else.
Okay, it's unanimous. We're going for indefinite postponement. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
A process.
Yep, no, and where, listen, I think at the end of the day, we're all trying to row in the same direction.
Exactly.
And I am fully appreciative of the concerns that have been expressed. I, you know, I wish it were otherwise, but I certainly understand. And I think we can find a way to get from, you know, we're at A, we don't know what B looks like yet, but we want to get to C.
Right, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, next. We're getting there.
Madam Chair, for, just for the record, I think you may want to just close the public hearing as well, just for a matter of procedure.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, planning board discussion. We've already done this. Okay.
So we have it.
Go on to the precinct meeting schedule.
So just, if I may, on this next item, this is related to the recommendation. And I just want to make it clear for the record, at the last meeting, you and everyone had continued the hearing to tonight. In between such time, we had to then publish the warrant or the article in the warrant so that town meeting members, you know, receive it in the mail, et cetera. Based on the discussion that we had at that time, the recommendation put into the warrant was that you would make your recommendation on town meeting floor.
At that time.
So I just wanted to clarify for the record, that's typically something that you would vote on and approve. So it's not necessarily something that you have to vote on tonight, but I wanted to make it clear to the folks listening at home who may be watching live and for you folks that that was your intent, was to have that recommendation, that you would make the recommendation on town meeting floor, clear for everyone involved.
And we will do that.
Okay.
All right. So precinct meetings. Did everyone have a chance to check this against his or her own schedule to see what you're able to do? You said you are going to all but two.
Short of cloning myself, yes, I will go to three of these meetings.
Which ones are you going to?
I haven't decided as of yet. I felt like maybe I could fill in for members who might want to attend their specific meeting.
Okay. I checked against my schedule and I am unable to attend precinct one and two and eight and nine because November second I can't do, but I certainly can do the others.
I, I'm a town meeting member, so I'll go to November second, precinct two.
You're going to go, you're going, okay.
Which is also precinct one, right?
Yeah, so you're going to one and two. But it happens that on November seventh, one of the ones I can do, I don't care which one it is personally, but I can't go to both. So is there someone else available on the seventh?
I can do the seventh.
John, you're going to go?
I can do the seventh.
Wonderful, thank you. Which one?
Yep.
Which one?
There's two.
The seventh. He's going to do four and seven.
Jim is going to seven?
At about.
I'll do the church.
I'll go to Gascanti. Okay. What would you like to do, Pat?
Oh, I'm definitely going to five and six.
Yeah, I've gone there. That's what I usually go to.
Yeah.
We'll both go to Pat, right?
Yeah. You know, we're going to lose Nick Lowell as our precinct captain.
Oh, really?
Mm, he has a house in precinct eight, I think. So he'll be gone next, by next April.
So who's going to Fairgrounds?
Okay, so Paul's going to one and two and I'm going to go to three. John's going to go to four and seven. I'll go to five and six. And we've still got eight and nine up in the air, it sounds like.
I could do.
Okay, good.
Jed?
Yep, sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Yeah, I see. All right.
Very good.
Okay. Now.
And once again, happy to meet with you guys before the precinct meetings to go over the specifics of the zoning articles. So just come by the planning office.
Yeah, that night, well, or that night, we can meet just before. You get us a room at the Lawrence School, we can just be in that room.
Yes, we will also have that right before town meeting.
And that's at six thirty?
Yeah.
Or six?
Yeah, usually.
I think six thirty. Does it, town meeting starts at seven?
Yeah.
So it's six thirty.
We don't usually need a full hour.
No.
No.
Now, again, the forty-B, this is a discussion item. Did everyone have a chance to look at the proposal and think about what you think? This is for, the proposal between, off of Sandwich Road, between Sandwich Road and twenty-eight A, right at, I didn't realize there was a Harris Hill in Falmouth. So I've learned something. And it's right beside Harris Hill. Charlotte, you didn't know that it's a what? It's, there's a Harris Hill. Who knows? Right, so this is the.
You have to refuse yourself to come in?
Yeah.
What's in the name? And the comments so far that have gone forward, I had a chance to read them over and certainly agree with them. Concerned about the ability to manage wastewater, there's questions about that, about traffic impacts, about how many trees are going to be cleared, what will be done about that, about future development of Jason vacant land, because this is only for fifteen acres, which is a density of twenty units per acre, but they're talking about nine hundred. I'm wondering, overall, how much land do they own there? And there are other impacts that have been cited by the town and other boards that they need to watch out for. Is there anything, any reason for us to disagree with what the other boards have thought? It's approached that way? And any further things that we want to call to the attention of the ZBA as they consider this?
I would just comment that the scope is so large that we are going to be re-engineering our town and the center of town, traffic, everything about our town can change if this goes. And I worked really, really hard to try to get an alternative to forty-B in Mr. Cod. And unless we get to that ten percent, we cannot stop this. And we should be deathly afraid that these people can re-engineer a whole town because I have not seen us ever stop one, including Main Street.
Right, Liberty Green.
Which, it's coming. We only have one choice, change our zoning, get it so we can get to, that we have the right amount of affordable housing by right. And we've got to do it as fast as possible. If you don't like our Mr. Cod because the buildings are too high or for whatever reason, well, then we got to change it and get right back to it because they're going to run us over if we don't do it. And I felt that way seven or eight years ago, I feel that way right now. I'm not against fortyBs. This is a monster. This is bigger than I ever dreamed of.
Didn't they say four stories high?
Yeah. Right, there it is, right there.
Yeah.
Once, it's a monster.
It's Hyannis.
It's horrible.
And that's only the first third.
Yeah.
Well, then he said.
It's Hyannis, then Framingham and Worcester coming.
Then Jim, he said in the paper, no, I never said nine hundred units.
Oh, yes, he did.
I went to the meetings.
Did.
And it was just sketchy.
Yeah.
From what I heard. It was avoidance of real questions and just kind of glossed over answers. I just got a real bad feeling about it.
Thank you, Bob, for using the word sketchy. I couldn't think of the word I wanted.
If they said they never said nine hundred units, where the hell did that number come from?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it came from them.
No, I didn't. Come on.
I think I think it's three of their presentations. They did one at the Affordable Housing Committee this last week. They did one, I can't remember. But anyway, I think that was the third presentation I've been to. And their inability to answer some of the questions, i.e., will there be play space for the children? So I've yet to hear this ever. Well, some places keep the swimming pools open year round. So I said, excuse me, I mean, I grew up in Maryland, which is five hundred and fifty miles south, quite a bit warmer, but no one's swimming in outside swimming pools in the winter. And clearly, no one is going to be using the pools in the winter here. The bottom line was no outside play space, but there were inside areas where children could play, I guess. So there are so many things for me that were not answered that were uncomfortable. And I kept thinking, and this is what's going to go into Falmouth? Because that's, I mean, I've been here now eight years and I never thought that I would see a development proposed this massive on this much property with so much extra property. And the gravel pits and, I mean, there's, there's, there's some questions in them that are ills that I have. And they never seem to be able to quite answer them. But it's frightening. It's a little frightening. It is frightening. Pat?
Think of the traffic on Sandwich Road, which is a relatively narrowish, curving road in many places and from where they're going to be locating, it certainly is. We've already had, I don't, you could go to the police and find out how many fatal accidents along there and just accidents, period, head on. You're putting traffic from three hundred units and maybe up to nine hundred on Sandwich Road. The town can't sustain that. The road can't sustain that.
I have friends that live on Sandwich and the neighborhood's coming on to it. They complain about the traffic now, especially the trucks that are, that are coming out of Tom Landis that go up Sandwich Road. So, yeah, traffic is, to me, a big issue and especially where it is located, so close to an intersection, too. So that's. Madam Chair, I think the biggest obstacle is going to be wastewater treatment. Yeah. And I'm not sure they'd be able to handle that. Because it would require an upgrade for the town treatment facility, which they would have to pay for or have their own system. And then they have disposal options. And the town is looking forward to an ocean outfall to eliminate some of the groundwater disposal. And that's what they'd have to do in that area. So it would be defeating what the town is trying to do in the long term. So I think they're going to have a very hard time dealing with wastewater treatment. Yeah, I think wastewater has to be a determining factor in any of these because we are a source of aquifer and we have to be, more so than other places, we have to be more careful with it.
They are talking about their own sewage treatment plant.
Yeah.
Still goes into the ground.
Still goes into the ground.
It still goes into the ground, they don't have room. If you take a look at this on the map and you just widen out your perspective for a minute to see what's around it, to the, to the left of it, there's Long Pond not that far away, there's a whole circle of ponds. The groundwater is so close to the, to the surface there in that, look at it. And this is right in the middle of that area of ponds. And drains down into Great Pond. It just seems that the wastewater in that particular area is the most sensitive area in town.
And if the state is saying that everybody should be upgrading their septic systems, that tells you what's going on with the groundwater.
So you can look right there, oh, oh, willing to move it, yeah. And see that hat shape, the white hat in the middle?
Yeah.
That's where they're thinking of putting nine hundred units. Of course, we're only supposed to be pretending it's going to be three hundred right now. But a peculiar thing is going to happen between, say they do actually put in the three hundred, that Jim's right, that it's a bulldozer that we can't stop. We've got Liberty Green coming, one hundred ninety-two units. We've probably got Kimco coming with, isn't that the right number?
Hundred and fifty, no, I'm just shaking my head out sad and it is not disagreeing. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Main Street is a hundred.
I was hurt by what you said.
Hundred and nine, hundred and nine units, not a hundred and ninety.
Hundred and nine, okay. And then we have Kimco that I think is one ninety-two, we heard, didn't we? I believe. And this three hundred, we're way over the ten percent that gets us off the hook, at least for a while, with forty-B. That's the only saving grace out of this.
Keep in mind, I believe, I'm a little, our production plan, I think, is only seventy-five units a year.
Yeah.
Six, seventy-six.
Seventy-six, oh, I'm sorry.
You were super close.
So that's what our goal should be, every year as fast as we can, until we get to the ten. And with this board and every other board should be focused on getting that done. Because this is a train wreck coming at us that we can't control. this is a train wreck coming at us that we can't control.
And I think there are other ways we can do it, John and I were discussing two-family units, I mean, we have all this property, one acre, two acre zoning, that have a big house on it, that, you know, you, rather than, the accessory apartment bylaw was great, but the 40% kind of kills a lot of houses, that if you just split them between two floors, I've done it, my brother has two houses, and we did that, single families.
Well, keep in mind, we got to get to the, we're not, you're not talking about making the two-family deed restricted, that won't help us on, on the 10%.
No, no, no.
Okay. General housing, yes.
But general housing, that, you know, we want to...
Well, we got to get to the 10%.
We want to increase the number of units per acre, as opposed to a single-family house on, on a one-acre parcel, why can't there be two families in a unit there, so...
Well, we started out, when we were discussing what turned into Mr. Cod, that we really want to restrict that high density to the center of town.
Yeah.
And on the sewers.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't want to be putting higher density all over town, you'd have to be really careful.
Well, it depends on what your definition of high density, is it 20 units per acre, or two units per acre?
You'd have to look at it, area by area.
Right, right.
To make that decision, and I think one of the things that would help us a lot, is when we actually get going on our local comprehensive plan, the scheme that the, I don't know, the scheme is the right word, that the Cape Cod Commission planners came up with, of the seven different areas, to apply that to what we have, how close can we get to that, because we have places where we don't, and can never fit it, it just went too far already, but see how that fits, and use that as, as our guide, to make it work, because you don't want it to suddenly be the way agricultural zoning has been used.
Yeah.
Just a catch-all for everything.
Right, yeah.
It sounded, it sounded like we wanted to be advising the ZBA on a couple of points. I think the one about no play space and no safe space, away from the gravel pit, is different from anything else that's already here, so it's a good point for us to be making, and to make more as strongly as we can. The point about the massive scale, that Jim raised initially, it's just a monster for the town, that Paul underscored, that we need safety for the children on the site, that we want the traffic on Sandwich Road to be a primary consideration, that the roads just won't take it, and you know, 28 is not much wider.
Locking is not.
No, it's, it, narrow roads right around it, that the, it is, that was a good phrase that you had, that it's really re-engineering our town onto an entirely different scale, and it's not a scale that we would welcome, and that wastewater has to be, in addition to the safety for the children, the number-one concern. So, is that something you write on?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And taking copious notes.
Okay, I can give you my scribbles, but you're taking them down, and I certainly agreed with every other point that was raised by the other boards, that were here, yeah, and just want to, you know, add our, our bit to it.
Can I make a couple of comments on it?
Yes.
So, the zoning in that area is one unit per acre, so they're going to increase, with the 300 units, they're going to increase the zoning by 15 times what we'd ordinarily allow.
Right.
And by doing that, their, their, I've heard that their purchase price is about $2 million, and divide that by 300 units, they're going to be less than $7,000 land cost per unit. So I think we should also ask if they're going to go forward with this, to increase the affordable units to maybe 50% instead of 25%.
Did you pick...
If they're going to do 15 times the allowed density, and have land costs of like $7,000 per unit, I think they can afford to increase the amount of affordable units to 50%.
Well said. When did they buy that, if that's all they paid?
I'm not saying they've even bought it yet.
But, but John, this is a number that the developers for 40B use, is something that John just brought up, it's a cost per door, and I've heard that number being $50,000, and they, it's expensive, but they go ahead. I've heard some that are even paying $100,000.
We paid more than that for our...
$7,000, what do you think, John, is a reasonable number from a developer, to pay per door, just to even evaluate a piece of land moving forward? He builds them, so I think that's illegitimate.
Well, they're doing rentals, so it's a totally different thing, but...
Well, but they're affordable, though...
Anywhere from 25 to 50,000.
And they're at 7.
The cost of those units, even the affordable units, is very, very expensive, and, and people commented that our fire department, our police department, they can't even afford, unless they doubled up, they said, and two people moved into...
A single unit, right.
Which is ridiculous.
One thing, we really can't do anything about that, because that is the market rent for our town, and they're either going to be controlled or uncontrolled, and as soon as you say they're uncontrolled, it's whatever they want them to be, and the market drives that, not you, not me, what our opinion is. The only thing we can do is what is deed restricted?
They did say, because the Affordable Housing Committee kept hammering, could there be more affordable units? We would like there to be more, there is no way we can do any more affordable units, which we hear all the time.
But John has just presented a really good rationale for, yes, they can, and getting those numbers out there might just make it possible for it to be rethought, well...
Because I know our develop, we probably paid over 50 per, per door.
Really?
Yeah, between the cost of the land, the infrastructure.
Maybe we should hear from other developers, we've done a lot of projects in town, what the cost per door has been in the previous project, and take a, take a look through that lens, because I think, I think they're ludicrous.
What was the cost per, per door up there on, besides Staples?
Kendall Lane, it's way up there, it's a lot more than 50.
Yes.
They haven't shared me the final numbers yet, but it, it's a lot more than 50. Their, their goal was 50, and it just went up and up and up.
Oh.
But their sales prices were also higher, that's how they offset it.
Right.
So you can offset $100, $100,000 per door, if you're getting 500,000, you know, if you're making all the money on your units, it's...
Yeah, well, we've gotten way off track here.
Well, it is, though, we got to fight this, this is, this is going to change our town, and I don't know how, what are we going to do?
And maybe it comes down to, they, they need to scale it down, they did scale down some of Liberty Tree by the height of the buildings, remember, it's going to be five stories, and now it's three, and part of that was because...
They got rid of a building.
The neighbors who fought it, sold their land directly, abutting it, so they were able to expand into the neighborhood, so that allowed them to have more floor area, and less, the need to go up was less. So, you know, there may be some compromises that would have to be made, but I agree with Pam, the answers you got were, were really almost nonexistent, they kind of skipped over a lot of things, or...
I think they've done a lot of developing, this is, it's sort of a luxury development, with a beautiful in-ground pool, and lots of amenities, and...
Yeah, I think I even mentioned that, that they pretty much specialize in luxury developments.
We're trying to do a recommendation here.
Yeah.
We are, and I think that we've got our, as much as we need to, to be effective, we make a longer list, they won't pay attention. I do think for the board, we need to pay attention to Jim's question, what are we going to do? And I would think the immediate thing to be working on, and we'll get a subgroup to work on it, is how we're going to amend Mr. Cod, to make it more effective as we had intended, we've learned now that we have to change it if we really want it to be a useful thing. So, Jim and John, you worked on it to begin with, you want to work on it again?
Sure. Yes.
Anybody else want to, oh, we can only have three still?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, and we ought to get to that. We need something solid, and I'm sure Eric will work on it, we need something solid, probably before Christmas, yet, well, by February, when the warrant...
Yeah, to be ready for April town meeting.
Okay, so, but I think we've come to the end of our agenda for the night.
Committee reports.
Are there any announcements?
Committee reports.
Oh, sorry, wait, wait.
Committee reports.
So, committee reports, Paul?
Well, it's really not a committee report, but two years ago, the Transportation Committee was ended, they submitted a report, and really not much happened to it. I was recently asked by the former chairman, who did not want to be reappointed, whether I and others would be interested in a reconstituted Transportation Committee, and it was requested by someone in Town Hall, and it was supposed to be somewhat quiet, and I said, well, I think since I'm the Planning Board representative, the Planning Board will have to decide who would be that representative on that committee, so I declined to offer any other suggestion other than that.
If this were to be reconstituted, are you willing to be that representative?
We don't know if it's going to be a committee, so if there is a committee, we can talk about it.
Oh, until then.
It was a very controversial committee, as you well know.
I remember, I, you're suckers for punishment, really.
Yeah. I think you would be a very good candidate.
I, I think I'm busy, so, any other committee reports?
There's a housing forum tomorrow in Hyannis, I think I've been to the last four, so I'm... Wait, is that a, is it called a forum?
Yep. I think they call it a summit, maybe?
Summit, and I think it was like $25 or something, not a biggie, but, you know, I mean, it's very interesting, they have attorneys from all different areas, and housing people from all different areas of the state, and, anyway, the committee is moving ahead, doing everything I think we possibly can to, you know, push the idea, and inform and educate people, which is, I think, part of what this committee should be doing.
John?
No.
Nope? Okay, I'd like to just make an observation, that we are still not doing anything about trying to regulate short-term rentals. You see, New York City has now decided they have had enough, and they're not going to have more short-term rentals unless the owner is living with it, living in it.
Who is that?
Other places are equally pressed as we are, New York City.
New York City.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're working on that in the vineyard, they just had a meeting, I think it was last night, or maybe even tonight, about that, and they've, I think it would be worth going to the Vineyard Gazette to see what the reporting is on that, because they, they did set some parameters for it, so it might...
Oh, good.
Might be interesting to see what the vineyard's doing.
Yes, it would be.
And one of the conditions was, the owner had to...
Had to be there.
Be there, yeah.
Right, right, we're going to have to do something.
It had to be at least a week, those are the two things I remember from the article, so, so it'd be interesting to see.
We do, we need to see...
The owner has to be, so they can only rent out rooms, they cannot rent out a whole house.
I'm not sure about that.
Well, well, it sounds like it.
Yeah, well, but I'm not sure, I'm, I'm trying to recall something.
No, but that really sounds like the bylaw we already have.
On short-term rentals?
Yeah, right now, you can...
Accessory apartment, you mean?
No, you can rent out up to, is it six rooms?
I think it's six rooms, you mean, the rooming house.
The rooming house, it's, it's already on the books, and we should take a look at that, but it sounds like, that's what it sounds like.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It is already in books, once you make the owner already be there, it becomes a rooming house, and our bylaw already covers it, and it's old, but we can redo it, but we should look at that old bylaw, but that's, I believe that's what that bylaw says.
Got you. Yeah.
I haven't, I haven't looked at it in years, but that's my recollection, that we have a bylaw that allows anyone in Falmouth to rent out rooms.
Rooms, the house that my sister and I bought was being used as a rooming house.
Because that's how people survive when they needed money before, you know, they did it.
It's how my great-grandmother...
Yeah, but I like the idea of having to live there, that's, that's pretty cool.
It is pretty cool, it'd be good, in case we can get to work on that also. Any other kind of announcement things?
Planning Board report?
We're going to get there, I think on announcement, I think that we should announce that Bob's Habitat for Humanity had a dedication, or is it the weekend?
Yeah, Saturday.
Too early in the morning.
Yeah.
But it, and rainy.
And raining, yeah.
Yeah, but congratulations.
Thanks.
And none of those were your buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, nicely done. Are there families for all of them?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have to, they're picked before they're even foundations, and, so...
Ah.
Oh, yeah, because they have to put in their sweat equity.
That's right, they have to work on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, congratulations.
Thanks.
Right. Planning report?
Nothing related to report, other than, you know, we've got all eyes on town meeting right now, so we're preparing everything we need to for town meeting, we've got the presentation ready, we've getting all of our materials ready, so it's eyes on town meeting.
Okay, great, right, and we will be ready for that, in which case, we could entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, adjourned, thank you.
Skip over it.